Welcome to Conversations with Cheryl Weston. We're happy to have you with us. Today, we will be discussing the October 1st, 2024 City Council Agenda. And without any further ado, we will get right into that. Um, hopefully. Hopefully, so let's see what we have here. And we're going to talk about the elections. And we will get into the City Council Agenda first. So let's take this right over here and begin. Um, the usual. Uh, let's see, row call, proclamations, uh, proclamations and presentation, the Black Maternal Health Month. I wonder who's going to do that? Hmm, interesting. I'm just being sarcastic. Um, liquor, those first few items, nothing stands out. Um, now, there was no opposition against this one, the Class D liquor license. Doing businesses in Pmart at 2302 South 20th Street. It's a new application, but an old, um, location. I don't know if there'll be any discussion on that much, since there's no opposition. Um, going through 10, 11, not much there. Um, everything here is the Saddle Creek Campus, which we know there's nothing going to change. Public hearing and a vote today. Um, there's not going to be anything that's going to stop that, you can count on that. Um, doop, 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 Keywood, nope, 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 nope. Here's a tax increment financing, this is the one, this is definitely going to be a go. Um, 22 South 15th Street and 201 South 16th Street. Those are the twin Central Plaza Towers down there. And if you happen to catch anything on the news, you will have seen that, um, the gentleman was on there talking about the first one. Is should be by spring, they'll have it completed. And the second one by 2027, I believe he said. Um, and that, uh, they are going floor by floor, apartment rooms by room. So that's what's going to take a little time. Here's the thing on this, this will be 707 new apartments. There will be 1,600, 16,000 square feet of commercial space and 550 parking stalls. Um, and then there's the big one, here we go. 26,449 and a change, um, for the redevelopment through the TIFT. There'll be public clearing and vote, there may be some discussion, but it still will pass. There's no ifs and ands. Um, because you see, there's no opposition, and even if there was opposition, probably wouldn't be anything to keep it from moving forward. Um, consent agenda, this is the item that I thought was noticeable again, as we talked about it last week. And they had the public hearing. Um, this is on the consent agenda. And, um, this is what's really, I thought was important is, um, the telephone companies, the amount of the occupation tax levied and imposed on telephone companies shall be in the sum, it was six in one quarter. They are reducing this to 4% of the gross result receipts resulting from the sales and communication services through within the corporate limits. Wouldn't that be nice, folks? If we were to have a decrease on our restaurant tax? That would be nice, but instead, who's getting the break? The telephone companies. And you know, if that money, if that is, and according to Rick Fulton, that's about $3.5 million. Who's going to make up that loss to the budget of $3.5 million? And this is what, as I mentioned last week, was shown that, um, Rick Fulton, who had sent an email um, to the City Council members and the city clerk. When you vote today on the ordinance to lower the occupation tax levy against telephone companies by the city, remember that this change will cost Omaha over $3.5 million in one year. Now, how would that help us taxpayers in Omaha or anybody coming in? How would that help if our restaurant tax was reduced? So what he heard in Lincoln over the LB 1023, which they gloated about it, was that it went under the Omaha Senators and the new lobbying firm of Kelly Plucker, which we paid, uh, increased their amount to $200,000 with a raise every year. Failed down on the job, that's right, they fell down on it because they didn't even, uh, protest this bill? The legislature at all, and it went right through. Because remember, um, this last year, when I tried to talk about this, um, and presented the information? Um, hmm, guess what? Nobody would listen, they already had it set, there was no reason. And the City Council just, oh, bragged about how this, uh, Plucker Kelly or Kelly Plucker lobbying and, and what was the cost? And, and, um, City Councilman Hug, he went on and on, and Laborman, I mean, it was made you want to gaffe. But anyway, the point is, they missed the ball. Do we think that Jack Shihola, Shilola would have missed this? I don't think so. Now, we're out of at least 3 million, 3.3, 3.5 million dollars. But here's what I like, Rick, and you have to read his, um, emails, if I can get this highlighted here. Um, the way the city spends money, it's probably not a big deal to this administration. You're probably right, Rick. Uh, moving on, let's see what we have. Again, um, I don't think that anything in there will have much. The consent agendas, those should move fine. There, it's not that I think anything will change on it, but, um, this item number 30 and, uh, 31, I found kind of interesting, and I sure would like to know what the, the history is on, on the contracts. That this company seems to receive most of them. Um, and that is, here we go. Sidewalk snow and ice removal in the Northeast Quadrant in the city of Omaha. 22,520 for Navarro Lawn and Landscape. You can see the bids here, they always are just a little bit low, um, than the prior, than the other companies list. So I don't know what the background is for these two companies, but I just know that we see Navarro Lawn and Landscape quite a bit. So is there no other companies out there that can get a bid? And then you have, um, the Southeast Quadrant, they get $21,520. Um, for, well, I'm sorry, I made a mistake on that. Um, here we go. 20,520 for the snow and removal in the Southwest Quadrant of the city. Again, same people. And let me back up. I was right the first time, it is item 31, which has the Southeast Quadrant in the city of Omaha for the snow and ice, which is Navarro. And then it is the same company that gets most of the barrier in traffic, absolute barricade. Theirs was 2520, $20,520. It's, you know, it's just like here in Omaha, it's the same companies, it seemed to be getting all the same contracts. Um, no one's questioning us. This one, item 34, that was, if you remember, at the last, um, public hearing on the week before, and they postponed it, and then it was held. Um, there was a lot of discussion on this because of the way that it was put together. And the problem was, one of the gentlemen spoke up and said, well, he didn't think that was right, just because it passed on with the property, and it'd been that way for 17 years and on and on. So what they did was, Amy Melton came up with this, working with the Law Department, amended so that in the future, this youth permit, she'll be specific only to this applicant, and she'll not run with the land. So should he decide to sell, this time it goes forth, if it was moved forth, it will not go with the land. This is only this kind of like one time thing. Um, they have a way of, you know, making this work out. Um, I know, today I'm being sarcastic with this, I'm going to get back to seriousness. Sometimes you've got to have a little laughter. But anyway, we got here again. Moving along, there's a public hearing here on the special taxes. Um, levy for snow sidewalks and soft clearing. Um, if you haven't already been disputing it, you're not going to have anything, because this is a public hearing today. So there might be some people who come down, but I don't know many, because most people feel that, hey, what's the point? They're going to go along with everything anyway, so it doesn't make much difference. Um, now here was an item I thought was kind of interesting. Um, in ordinance declaring the necessity of acquiring for use the city of Omaha, the necessary private property located at 2307 N Street for the construction of a city-owned parking garage. Um, here's where, now, and I don't know, but maybe it'll come out. Maybe the property owner is okay with the price that's being negotiated and will accept that. But here's what I noticed. Providing that the city negotiate with the property owners for the purchase of the above-mentioned property. Um, providing that if this parcel cannot be obtained by negotiation, condemnation proceedings will be undertaken and completed. So what this is saying is, if you don't, you can't get this negotiated, hmm, sounds like some imminent domain, it will be taken. So that's the thing, and if you look, it's, it's a healthy piece of property here. Um, let me see if I can get to that page, I noticed that it was, um, the drawing, there you go. This is the property, 2307, right there, N Street, that's quite a bit. So we'll see. Um, public hearing and, um, the vote. Moving along. Um, the next item I saw that I had kind of a question was, um, the bid rejection approval. This item 44, um, what happened was, this gentleman, um, who is National Sales Manager for K-Tech Specialty Coatings, and they manufacture the Liquid Highway De-icer. Um, they submitted a bid, and the bid was submitted timely and received, but the bid bond did not arrive by the due date, because it was separate. So the reason the bid bond arrived, according to, um, Mr. Preston, was it was an inner-office misunderstanding. The bond was to be overnighted, but through an error, it was sent regular mail, so therefore, um, it didn't make it on time, they regret. If holds true, I'm sorry, but you're going to be denied, because you're not one of the favorite. But it won't be like that, it won't be because you're not in the favor, it will be because, and I can almost see and hear what's going to be said, but I'm not going to forecast that. Um, so that will be, and then we go into then the non-action items. And mainly, um, this will be the second reading on these items. Um, there will be no City Council meeting on October the 15th. So the vote will probably be, um, carried on the following after the 15th, which would make that what, the 22nd? So those are non-action. Um, again, we're going down. These are items which will be the first reading. Um, the second reading, it says here, will be October the 8th. The third reading will be the public hearing and the vote on October 22nd. So those for those, um, nothing there. Um, special use permit. Um, applications to allow indoor and operation in the GI District located, no problem, 160, no problems. Um, here we go with our tax increment, here's another one, folks. And this one I thought was another kind of interesting, you know, because we keep having all this conversation about, um, affordable housing and what we have to do, and that's kind of part for tax increment is to be in these areas that are, um, condemned or either areas that are so bad, and they need all of this help in order to redevelop the area, revitalize. But look at this right here, this is on Nicholas Street, 12th and Nicholas. Proposes the new construction of a five-story mixed-use building with 78 market rate, market rate units. And about 12,429 square feet of first floor will be commercial space. And here, So here we go again, tax increment. Um, probably the only opponent will be Larry. And says here, be laid over for the October 8th to advise for the public hearing. Um, then we have another one, if you go right on down the line there, um, 13th and Nicholas Street. Framed Apartments, construction of a five-story apartment building with 149 units in the upper floor. Um, they don't say here where it's affordable housing or, um, market rate, they just say what's going to be historic building. Oh, okay, here we go, 135 upscale rooms, upscale. Um, so TIF, oh, it's just 10,300, what the heck? Okay, um, and then ordinance on the first reading, these are things, they just go over and say, hey, this is the first reading, the second reading and public hearing will be October the 8th. Uh, further down, pretty much all the same, those, nothing that's going to stand out. So this shouldn't be too long unless, although a couple of those items I mentioned above, there will be, um, some opponents that will speak, but otherwise, it should move along like, it'd be like last week, probably about an hour at the most. All right, so that's all of the City Council, and now I wanted to move on to the Douglas County election. Um, and folks, this is really, this election is, they've been talking about it. And, you know, we're down to the last 36, 37, somewhere around there, 38 days before November 5th. Here, this is where everybody should be able to go, because, and they have, I want to give kudos to the Douglas County Election Commission, because you have a pretty easy, friendly website, where some of the companies around here, don't do that. Let's take like OPPD, theirs is not friendly at all. But anyway, you can easily go to put it in Douglas County. What I like, right here, you can find your voting information, all you have to do is put in your house number, your zip code, and it'll hit search, and guess what? You, you can get your precinct, polling place, political subdivision, elected, all of this information is right there. You don't have to worry about it. The ballot, an early ballot to show, um, and here again, this is what's important, folks. Is, it is so important that we get out and vote by this. The early ballots start being mailed on Monday, September the 30th, and then they will be mailed out throughout the week, the next few weeks. You'll be able to go in on October 7th, if you want to go into the Election Commission. Office and vote, there's no reason why we can't, you can't get out to vote. Um, and I thought this was something that was kind of, as of September the 3rd, 127,102 Republicans listed as registered voters, 131,441 as Democrats. And here, nonpartisan, 91,524. Now, as you see, this is as of 9/3/24. Uh, it will probably be updated, because like I say, the Douglas County Commissioner does get, um, their, uh, website up to date. And remember, this election, you will need the voter ID information. And they've done a pretty good job in bringing this out, but if you click on there, you can find out right there, here's the whole list of, uh, these are acceptable forms. Um, so all we have to do is make sure we have these when you go to vote. And the early ballots, those have already been identified, so there, all you have to do, boom, get it, be done. One thing I will give credit here is voters can get a free state ID uh, for voting purposes at the DMV. So it's not going to be that hard, as some states have made it in order to vote. But if you vote in person, you will need acceptable form of ID. Okay, um, so let's close back and just want to make sure you don't forget, um, September 30th will be the first mailing out of early ballots, October 7th will be the first. But you know what? You can go to this website, and it can tell you, there's a whole schedule. Um, I wanted to go down to, let's see here. Notice here, on the 15, there are approximately 15 different issues that we will need to really be careful and read. And that's why it's important, when you get your ballot, take a few minutes to read and study those, so that you know what you're going to vote for. And make sure that you understand when you put yes, or if you put no. Um, notice of general election, here it is to tell you all of that. Um, and then they break it down really, really easy. I think this will be an interesting race, we will see. Let me go back up here. Um, get back up here, I just saw it. Okay, here we go, legislature, that'll be interesting. Um, District 13, because there's been some controversy over this one, Nick Batter and Ashley Spivey. Also, um, Terrell McKinney, who will be the only name on the ballot. However, Emeritus, Senator Ernie Chambers will be a write-in candidate. So if you want, you can write him in on that ballot. Uh, and it will show, and then let's look at, there was something else on here. Um, make sure you get your ballot back in, and, uh, they will be having extended additional hours. So they're trying to really make this happen, give everybody an opportunity to vote. If you want to come into the office or still get registered by the days. Uh, let's see if there was something else on here. I think that's it. So candidates up for election. Here we go. This was, if you go through here, it has each one, Douglas County Clerk, District 1, District 3. Those are all individuals, um, who will be running without any opposition. This will be an interesting here, Sean Kelly and Brian J. Fahy. Should be heated. Mike Friend is running unopposed. Another one that will be, um, might be interesting is the learning community, let me find out. Um, this District 2? This might be interesting. Um, let me see here. Okay, as I said, um, District 11. You will only see Terrell McKinney's name on the ballot, you can do a write-in if you so desire, and let me see down here. That there was one other, um, Omaha Public District, OPPD, Eric Wims, John Hudson are both running, uh, unopposed. Subdivision 8, Mike Kavanoff, Morgan Ryan Craft. Hmm, might be interesting. Hmm, let's see. There's been a lot of controversy going on with this particular one, Omaha Public Schools. Eric, if you will remember, Eric was one of the candidates that was up for the City Council, um, for District 4, when Ron Hug was appointed to the City Council. He is running for Omaha Public Schools against Kimra Snipes. Been some controversy out there. Um, trying to see if we've got anybody else. President of the United States, I mean, this is like a no-brainer. But, and I, people can say what they want, everybody has their own opinion. But if you have made up your mind by this particular point by now, you, you, you're just saying that, because we know there's only one candidate, if you're looking for a candidate to run and be elected as the President of the United States and save democracy, there is only one. And, um, let's see what we have here. Um, Ben Price, Ralston, nope, nope, nope. Um, this isn't one that, and I, coming out, everybody has their right to vote for who you have your opinion. But I will, I will come out, and I am in support of Ms. Dombak, Clarice Dombak. This is for District 2, District 2, get it off your butt and get out and vote and support this young lady. David Levy is the, uh, on the Board of Directors for OHA. Do you think he rides the bus? Do you think he's concerned showing his behavior that he's had on the Board of OHA? Do you think he is concerned about the area that rides the bus the most, public transit? I don't think so. Um, has he been at the very meetings? Is he in the Community Advisory Group? Nope, but because of his name, and this is the first time that these board members will be elected, they are usually recommended by the mayor. And this is the first time, I wholeheartedly ask, support, uh, Clarice Dombak. She's out there in the community for District 2. She has been with the Omaha Trail, Sparks. Uh, so she is into trying to make sure that there is transit, uh, transportation and work with the board for the purpose of people who really ride the Omaha metro transit. Um, someone who has the community and people, that that's what Um, someone who has the community and people, that that's what she's trying to support. This is David Levy, who is with um uh Baird Attorneys Firm. My, it skips, all I can think of is Baird, but it's several names there. Been there for years, has a percentage. Should have come off the OHA board based upon the new law, but of course, they found a way to get around that. Um, however, I would definitely, definitely, and I'll probably be speaking about this again. No way on Jose will I su- um even suggest the possible support for him. Danielle, I know him. You know, we need people who are going to be, who are really concerned about people um who are in the neighborhood, the district. Um, Garcia, she is um someone who is concerned about the people, the community, the areas, that this is important to them. Not just people who will be, would have been on it, because they would have been nominated through the board. Nope. Kurt Simon, we all know who that is. Let me go down here. District three. Oh, here's a good one. Tony Vargas, Don Bacon. Did you get the news? Just this past week, Don Bacon and Deb Fisher uh received endorsement from Donald J. Trump. And they were delighted to have his endorsement. What does that say for you? Uh, Dan Osborne is fired up, got her having to spend some money. She's gotta do some campaigns. Uh, been doing some ads and it's so, I'm like, woman, you ain't been out here. You haven't held a town hall meeting and community engagement since twenty-seventeen, cause you didn't feel like you had to. And you have become a multimillionaire since going to um Washington. Let's see, who else do we have down here? Um, those are mayor. Waterloo, workers' compensation. Again, as I said, there's the write-in candidates, because that is how well this election commission has done. Um, and it's Ernie Chambers for district eleven, so you can write in that candidate. Let's see. That's pretty much it. But again, here it's so easy, folks, to go to this, their website. And you've got so much information out there that there's no reason not to become an informed voter. Um, the ballot issues are not on here. However, we did get some great news that the, the ballot, uh, the judge said that the two ballots for marijuana, uh, medical marijuana will um be able to go forth. And, you know, um at this time, I'm not a user of marijuana, not favorite, but for medical marijuana, um, I think it's it would be good, because it has been proven and there's people who really have been helped by being able to have that. And particularly, the main driver in this was a woman whose child suffers from epilepsy severely, and it could help, but there's other people, there's been other stories of people, how this uh medical marijuana could help people. So I think, and then the other thing is, it's the people's right. They went out, did the election, um, or did the ballots, searching and got the names. And I think it's the right of the people of Nebraska here. Douglas County should be able to make the decision, not just somebody who has enough money to pay to see to get this to the court through system. So that's all we have with that, except I have a teaser for you. And I'm not, I was gonna show it here, but I decided not to. Um, I would, it'll be in our notification on our YouTube channel and Facebook, Conversations with Cheryl Weston. There is a video, it's called The Blue Dot White Dudes. You don't wanna miss it. It's not that long. It's only like a minute and a half. But folks, you need to watch it. So I'm gonna support The Blue Dot White Dudes for Harris and Walts. Check it out on Conversations with Cheryl Weston. Have a great evening. Thank you for tuning in. Hit the like button and subscribe. Oh, wanna make point. Some people have, are, do not like to subscribe, because they feel like it's uh privacy. There's a list out there that shows who subscribes or who watches it. It's not that. Our list of subscribers, um, we don't publish it. It's not on view for anyone that comes to the website. Feel free. We respect your privacy and we appreciate you subscribing. We're trying to get, wanted to get this before the end of the year. Um, so we're working really hard to get our subscriptions up. So we just ask that you do subscribe and you won't have to worry about if you don't get on the email list, cause we've got some good things coming. And um, we appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great evening. We'll see you soon.